We have a proclamation in honor of National Manufacturing Day for October 2, 2020. Whereas the first Friday in October is designated as National Manufacturing Day and was created as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the contributions of manufacturing in the United States. And whereas California has the largest number of manufacturers in the nation with representation across virtually all manufacturing sectors, CMTC and its partners celebrate October as Manufacturing Month California. Whereas CMTC, the California MEP Center, and their partners have been actively promoting National Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month California. And whereas due to these efforts, manufacturers throughout California will, in a coordinated effort, help illustrate what manufacturing is in participating in Manufacturing Month California events designed to increase public awareness of modern manufacturing and the great career opportunities manufacturing affords. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Peter Weiss, Mayor of the City of Oceanside, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 2, 2020 as National Manufacturing Day, as well as October 2, 2020 as Manufacturing Month California, and thank all those involved and their partners for their outstanding support of this worthy cause. Thank you very much. Now, we have a presentation for the virtual Turkey Trot. I'm presuming...
There's a virtual turkey?
Andy, maybe? All righty then. Mr. Mullen, we'll go to our closed session report.
Thank you. There was no meeting on item one on the closed session agenda. The council did meet on item two, A, B, and C. Item two, A, is a real estate negotiation involving the city-owned property located at 2008 Harbor Drive North. Negotiating parties are the Oceanside Small Craft Harbor District and Pacific Suites Incorporated. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property. The council also met on item two, B. That property involved 223 North Coast Highway, that's Petit Madeline. Negotiating parties are City of Oceanside and Petit Madeline Bakery. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property. Finally, the council met on item two, C, which is the portion of the El Corazon property, APN number 16208251. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and Sudbury Development Incorporated. Under negotiations are price and terms for the potential lease or sale of the real property. There's no action under the Brown Act to report on items two, A, B, and C. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we good to go, Ramon? We'll go back to the virtual Turkey Trot.
City Council members, I am O-Side Turkey Trot Race Director Kathy Canane. As we all know, state and local mandates prevent the Oceanside Turkey Trot from being a mass participation event. But due to popular demand, the Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation has created a virtual event to meet the needs of our participants and local nonprofits. We will have an anywhere and anytime trot where folks can register online and run, walk, or trot, a 5K, 5-mile, 1-mile, or quarter-mile, anywhere. Then they post their results in photos online and celebrate their socially distant trot sometime between November 14 and November 29. We would like to thank the City of Oceanside for their support over the past 14 years and the support of the sponsors who are keeping the virtual O-Side Trot alive for 2020. We're excited to have a host for our t-shirt pickup and sponsor of our largest teams and costume contest. $100 gift certificates will go to the top 15 teams over 20 members. And $100 gift certificates will go to the three favorite costumed registered participants posted on hashtag O-Side Turkey Trot. We are proud to announce our entry fees are at a record low. Our participant shirts commemorate our nothing can stop the O-Side Trot virtual trot. We will be offering the same fabulous group discounts for three or more folks who register at one time. This year's medal will bring a smile to the first 2,500 trotters who register while the supplies last. Our virtual trot allows folks to choose to have their shirts and medals mailed or utilize their reservation-only pickup on November 14, 21st, or 25th at Roadrunner Sports. The O-Side Trot has raised over $370,000 for our 80 local Oceanside schools and nonprofits over the past 14 years. We are so thankful to the schools, teachers, and parents who utilize our Miles of Smiles Activity Tracking System to help motivate the students to achieve their fitness goals. The tracking system is sponsored by the Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation and is free to the schools. Our team is so sad to miss the opportunity to cheer our trotters on Thanksgiving morning, but we will be offering some really fun race joy messaging to trotters during their virtual trot. Register today at OceansideTurkeyTrot.com, and let's start training now.
With that, we'll go to our consent calendar, which are items four through 12. Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
Nope. No public comment on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Move approval.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. With that, we'll go to 13, which is our first general item, which is introduction of an ordinance regarding restricted use of various things in the harbor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Weiss, City Council Members, Ted Shifflin, Harbor Division Manager. I apologize, my presentation is not on the drive, but I believe I can explain it pretty simply. So I'm presenting a proposed amendment to Chapter 29. Staff recommends that the City Council and Harbor Board of Directors introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 29 of the Oceanside City Code by the modification of Section 29A.16, which will restrict the use of surfboards, boogie boards, or similar craft with or without a foil and/or motor in the harbor or inlet. So as a background to this, back in 2016, paddleboards exploded in the harbor, and there was an amendment to the ordinance that approved the use of human-powered craft paddleboards in the harbor. Inadvertently during that process, the term surfboard and boogie boards was removed from the ordinance. However, surfboard and boogie boards have been restricted in the harbor for decades. Surfboards and boogie boards are especially dangerous as they are typically maneuvered in a lay-down position at very slow speeds, making it difficult for vessels navigating the inlet or harbor to see them. The Harbor and Beaches Advisory Committee voted 9 to 0 in favor of this ordinance at the August 17, 2020 meeting. For the same reason, we don't allow vessels in a surf line or swim line, we don't want to see swimmers, surfboards, or boogie boards in a navigation channel. I had a couple of pictures for you. Fortunately, I won't be able to show those. Staff recommends that the City Council and the Harbor Board of Directors introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 29 of the Oceanside City Code by the modification of 29A.16, which will restrict the use of surfboards, boogie boards, or similar craft with or without a foil and/or motor in the harbor or inlet. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, any public?
No public.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So paddle boarding is still going to be allowed?
Correct.
Per the previous council action? Okay. Yeah, I understand that there's been more activity in the harbor, and it's become more dangerous, and of course, safety is a primary concern, so I'm going to go ahead and move introduction of the ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
So the stand-up is still allowed? Because I see a lot of people exercising like that. The stand-up with the surfboard?
Correct. Stand-up allows.
Got it. How will this affect harbor days and the little activity they do where they make their own boat?
So, Councilmember Rodriguez, Chapter 29 allows for the harbor manager to allow those activities during special events.
Got it. So special events, there's discretion. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. That's all I have.
Is there a second?
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
I need to introduce Mr. Mayor. Sorry. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 29A of the Oceanside City Code to prohibit specified activities in the channel and harbor entrance.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
We'll go to 14, which is a request for an increase in a purchase order with NCTD for the Quiet Zones.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Brian Thomas, the city engineer. Tonight, we bring forward item number 14, a request to add additional money to the Quiet Zone Improvement Project. Staff is recommending the City Council approve a $35,858 increase to the North County Transit District purchase order, a $716,816 amendment to Rail Pro's ink to complete our professional services, and a $1,456,912 change ordered to ballot for Beatty to complete the public work process. This would require the appropriation of a little over $2 million from gas tax SB1 and thoroughfare fund project. Quiet Zone Project helps reduce train horn noise through the specified zone. It does not eliminate it, however, completely. The train engineers still retain their discretionary authority to sound the horn in the event of an emergency or what they perceive to be a dangerous situation. In 2002, the City of Oceanside began its discussion with a Quiet Zone, and North County Transit District Board Policy Number 18 for Quiet Zones was issued on October 2, 2016. I'm going to turn it over to David Toshack, our principal engineer, for the balance of the presentation. David?
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. David Toshack, Principal Engineer, Development Services Department. So our Quiet Zone is basically on the NCTD mainline or the San Diego subdivision. The crossings incorporated in the project are Cassie Street, Oceanside Boulevard, Wisconsin Avenue, Mission Avenue, Surf Rider Way. To make the project successful, we have to coordinate not only with NCTD, but also SDG&E, Amtrak, BSNF, MetroLink, and Sun Pacific Railroads. A lot of coordination as far as getting the approvals and their notifications. All that is regulated by Federal Railroad Administration and the California Public Utilities Commission. Typical of all our crossings is what you see. You'll see the standard crossbuck there with the gate, the longer gate for traffic. What was added was the crossbucks on the sidewalk, ADA compliant truck, gated domes and railings, the blue railings there kind of force people into that gate, so when a train comes, it doesn't have to blow the horn. It actually, people stop because of the active device there. Throughout the project, and typical of this project was, a lot of the work was either underground or inside equipment huts. So you really don't see the cost of the project on the ground. You see the gates, and it doesn't look like much work. But we had a lot of changes throughout the project, and they were addressed in adjustments to our bid quantities. We had that work identified, it just increased. And so the cause of those increases were several things, one of which was NCTD had ongoing projects, so they revised our ASBILs. The ASBILs were used to design the project, but changes were made during construction. So to address the work, we made changes according to the ASBIL changes that were received from NCTD. Other changes that we had to keep up with pace on NCTD was basically programming changes and software upgrades to their equipment, which resulted in improvements to the equipment that's inside the trackside huts, the metal boxes and little houses that you see along the railroad tracks. Another issue that wasn't affected to the critical path, but was a change, was a situation where Amtrak added a employee crossing at the Oceanside Transit Center. The FRA simply doesn't see much difference between a pedestrian crossing and an employee crossing for a railroad. So there were certain signages and adjustments and access we had to discuss there. Things that are more visible in the project and took some time to address was the pedestrian crossing, an NCTD pedestrian crossing at the south end of the Oceanside Transit Center. The current configuration is the crossing takes people from the parking lot onto the Sprinter platform. The Sprinter is operated on the, a separate subdivision. It's operated on the NCTD's Escondido subdivision. Unfortunately, since it's within the boundaries of our Quiet Zone, the FRA is willing to accept that crossing, that pedestrian crossing into our Quiet Zone. NCTD has a project coming forth to extend that crossing to their main platform. You can see in the photo the train sitting there at their Platform 3. So there's going to be much more pedestrians on that track, more Sprinter track, causing more sounding of horns at the location. Prior to December 2018, Sprinter was not blowing their horns at that location. The city received a letter from NCTD that they were notified that the CUPC, CPUC required that the horns blow at this location, so we expect more sounding of horns. Another visible occasion that FRA brought to our attention on the June 19 inspection after the work was completed was that observation of pedestrians walking, in the lower left-hand photo there, pedestrians walking along the railroad tracks to get to the Oceanside Transit Center platform. So in the FRA's view, they want an effective Quiet Zone. If a train is going to blow its horn, it's going to be for an imminent situation, not because people are struggling. So they're asking for more access provided, safer. The crossing at Mission there will have to require gates and more signal heads to flash when people are walking. Another addition to the project that we're incorporating is a couple of projects were identified in the 2021 budget, which is Mission Myers Intersection Project. We're doing that for a couple of reasons, one of which is our contractors already trained. The contractor already says the permits to do the work, traffic controls across railroad tracks. Our contractors qualified to do that at this point. It won't take the time to bid the project out. It won't take time to get their staff trained. In addition, the lead time on the poles for that intersection, we ordered back in April of this year, because there was almost a 30-week lead time on getting the poles, get us delivered mid-December, so we can move forward that work. The other reason why we're adding this work is because queuing. The signal has to talk to the great grade crossing. When the train is coming, the gates go down. That has to signal the traffic light to turn the right color so people can clear the tracks. We can't get people bound up in between the traffic signal and the railroad crossing. So again, as I mentioned, some of the funding for the project in the fiscal impact comes from the Mission Meyer Traffic Signal Project. It is a signal project notified 2021. We also have the Mission Median Reconstruction Project. We have to adjust the median a little bit to line up with the new lanes that are with the developer. That's also in the 2021 budget. Projects we have identified, additional funding is a pedestrian safety project and the traffic queuing cutter safety projects using gas tax SB1 funds. And then FRA improvements through the Thoroughfare Fund will also help pay for the difference made up for these changes. So with that, the, again, staff is recommending a $38,558 change in purchase order to NCTD for their oversight and involvement with the project, a $716,816 amendment to Rail Pros for continued design services and basically construction management services and coordination with NCTD on the railroad-related issues. And then again, the contractor is additional $1,456,112 for past and current work to make this Quiet Zone eligible for approval by the FRA. Again, all this work, once approved, will require FRA to come out and re-inspect the job site, notifications from the city to those organizations to get their final approval on the project. And if we get the appropriation of the funding through gas tax SB1 and thoroughfare money, we'll have those funds available to complete the work. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be with Brian on the sidebar as addressing any questions you might have, or I can stay up here as well.
Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
We only received one voicemail in support of this item, but it did not wish to be read into the record.
Thank you. So in a perfect world, when would the Quiet Zone be implemented?
We are looking now probably end of January. We have two reviews to go. We've worked with FRA, the Southwest manager, and basically there remains a 60-day reapplication period. The application period is ready to go. We just needed consent from NCTD to modify their operations, their spinner operations. Right now, the track is coming in on their pocket track, which was the one that has the current crossing, revising it to stay on the mainline track. Once they put that into an order, we submit that along with our reapplication. So the FRA used that. Now, there's three periods that...
End of January, which year?
2021.
Okay.
Yes, construction will be done this December, and then, but we just have to go through a concurrent process of doing the work and getting the approvals.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, and this is before us for change order in like, for an amount of $2.3 million, which is, was a difficult thing, I'm sure, for staff to come forward to do. There was some additional work that was being requested for safety purposes. This has been something we've been pursuing and looking at and studying for several years now. I think initially, when we started, we were looking at potentially partnering with a, with a private sector in funding, like perhaps creating a district, finance district, to pay for this. Initially, I believe we were told it would cost about between $7 to $9 million. I appreciate that I had a chance to speak with staff beforehand and ask a bunch of questions, concerns about, you know, how much of the transnet dollars that we get from Sandag will be, you know, used on this project. And I did get an email that basically talked about, you know, what are our future transnet dollars through, I think I got, through 2025? Is that right?
I believe so. Brian, do you remember? I think it was 2025.
That is correct. Councilmember Sanchez? So that was, so it was about $26 million that's anticipated. Now, the life of this transnet, I had asked, was trying to remember, is that 2035?
That's what I believed at first, but I've since found out it's 2048 unless it is extended again prior to that time.
So, I'm sorry, what was that? I'm...
2048.
Okay. It's a, yeah, there you go, the mask. Yeah, thank you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm getting used to hearing muffled speech, but sometimes I just, okay, what was that? Yeah, so people have been asking, I've been getting emails, phone calls, like, when is this going to happen? And so the first question, of course, from the dais was, when can this be completed? Obviously, $2.3 million cost overrun is, you know, something that it wouldn't, there's no way we would ever envision something that, that much as an overrun and a change order. But when I asked, well, what's this, what's the entire cost? It is about the $7 to $9 million. Is that correct? I don't know who to ask that question.
Yes, Councilmember Sanchez, the numbers that I ran is with the additional costs right now, it turns out, total project costs from almost inception around 2002, we're looking at about $7.8 million, right?
$7.8 million. So that was a few years ago, what was it, about 10 years ago when we started looking at this? And those are the numbers that we were listening to, $7 to $9 million. How much of that is going to be transnet altogether? Because, you know, there's some discussion here about thoroughfare and, you know, the different pots.
Yeah, based on, Councilmember Sanchez, based on the numbers we're looking at, roughly 56% of, 57% of the project cost is going to be covered by transnet. That's on the order of $1.45 million. We have grant money coming in. The current grants approved at $999,000. We spent $960,000 of that. We're actually going to go back to the grant and ask them for additional funds for the walkway. They've conceded to some of the approvals with some fencing and the walkway to Mission, to the platform. But we are also going to ask them to see if we're any eligible for the traffic signal, because there's a queuing process and trying to clear people out of the area. We're hoping that the Transportation Rail Division will accept additional, or approve additional fundings for some of these costs that we're incurring. We also have additional funding. Again, the new money is from thoroughfare and signals and SB1 money. Those are fairly small percentages. If I get into details, transnet's about, you know, 57%. The grant's going to cover about 12 to 15%. Transnet, about only 1%, or, I'm sorry, SB1 is about 2%. Signals, 4%, and thoroughfare, about, thoroughfare and signals, another 25%.
Right.
So about half the project's covered by, well, over half the project's covered by trans.
Thank you. So basically, this is a bitter pill, a cost overrun of $2.3 million for today, but this is something that we need to complete, and this will be probably the last step, right?
Yes, that's our understanding.
This is it. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval so that we can get this finally done and do the ribbon cutting in January. I think I had heard January, February, but hopefully, within that time period, we'll have some kind of a virtual ribbon cutting, maybe. I don't know. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
Thank you. I know your glasses are steaming up, but pull your, yeah, you'd be fine with us. This doesn't affect any of the Sprinter locations except at that south area and probably when it crosses Wisconsin and Oceanside Boulevard as far as Quiet Zones.
That's correct. We, early when I took over the project last year, one of the first things I looked at is to move forward the project and see if the Quiet Zone could be a separate Quiet, you know, established separately. The alignment and the setup of the Sprinter coming into the station does not allow for federal requirements, a separate Quiet Zone, so we had to incorporate it into the current project. But yes, it is basically only from Wisconsin and at the platform.
So just to be clear for the community, it doesn't affect anything east-west at this point?
That's correct.
The overruns are not our fault, and they are probably, as you explained to me, that we should be able to recover some of this in negotiations with the Transit District. I think, as I presented to them last Thursday, that we are seriously concerned about the overrun, and there's going to be some big changes down there here in another year or so, maybe two, when they start doing the complete upgrade of the Transit Center. And through the time that you're going to be implementing these Quiet Zones, you'll be able to have, I believe, opportunity to make up some of this, this money in your dealings with the Transit District. The cost increase of February 12 change order, that wasn't in our contract, and I think we've done an exceptional job. When I got this, I actually was on the Transit District when we were asking the Transit District to do this in 2002. So I think it's a long time in coming, and as, you talked about that fast when I was talking to you on the phone the other day, too. Unbelievable knowledge in your head without, you know, even looking at anything. I'm quite, quite impressed with how you've taken the bull by the horns here and made this happen. I think the residents, the businesses that are along the north-south corridor are going to be just overjoyed. It's no guarantee the horn's going to not blow as they come through, because if they see danger, they definitely will. see danger, they definitely will blow their horns, just as always. So I second this motion. I'm glad we got guys like you doing this, so thank you.
Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Mr. Navarro, how many we have on off-agenda items?
On agenda items, we have eight comments that were submitted, but seven asked to be read, and those were before the deadline. All right. So our first comment is from, I don't know, but this was submitted to us at the city clerk's Numerous accidents occur each year on Highway 78 between El Camino Real's off-ramp and College Boulevard while driving westbound. A chain-link fence, which has been repaired over and over again each year due to cars losing control on 78, driving up the embankment and crashing through the chain-link fence, ending up on Vista Way. Many of these accidents have caused additional injuries by hitting other cars driving through this section of Vista Way. Also, it endangers our pedestrians, bicyclists, et cetera, who travel either east or west on Vista Way. The current fence will not support these accidents as records show. A new solution must be discussed so we can eliminate the danger people driving on Vista Way face every time they enter this section of the road. I have a solution. I recommend with sincere passion that Caltrans starts to work on building a retaining wall. This wall will keep cars from crashing through onto Vista Way, creating a safe and secure environment that people can safely use without fear of getting hit. Vista Way is extremely busy and currently a very dangerous problem that needs your help. If approved, I recommend to make this wall high enough so your citizens that live on or near Vista Way will no longer be subjected to all the traffic noise, which is heard day and night. I thank you for consideration and helping to keep Oceanside's citizens safe. And the resident's name is Diane Klinko. Our next public comment comes from Ken Leighton. Ken Leighton, speaking only for myself. It was interesting to note that in a teleconference forum last night, appointed council member Ryan Keim said, and I quote, "I am new to this," indicating that you, Mr. Keim, have never run for office before. Oopsie, Ryan. Why would you mislead about something that is so easy to disprove? A quick check to the registrar's records showed that you, in fact, did run for city council a few years ago, and when you did, you came in seventh place with 3% of the vote. Now you are running again, but this time not as a local, but like someone who just blew into town like Christopher Rodriguez, who has also found that out-of-town developers and special interests can be a welcome piggy bank to pushovers like you. You have sold out and cashed in, taking $40,000 from developers and special interests who know they have a patsy they can now rely on. It is bad enough you have become Rodriguez's puppy dog on the council dais. It is frankly embarrassing to watch. He bullies you, and you just roll over and take it. Now you want to be just like your new daddy figure and sellout to all the developers who know they have you where they want you. Ryan Keim for council. When one sellout Christopher Rodriguez is not enough. Our next public comment is from Kathy Carbone. Hello, Oceanside. My name is Catherine Carbone, and I am a resident of Fallbrook and a proponent of no on Measure L. No on North River Farms. I want to remind you, as you are looking over your ballot, that Measure L is on the reverse side, down near the bottom on the right. We urge a vote of no on L. I also want to remind you that in 2017, we had an attempt at a mass evacuation during the lilac fire in Fallbrook, and both Highway 76 as well as Interstate 15 became a parking lot. I witnessed this myself as I was evacuated during that event. Make no mistake, this was not slow traffic. It was a solid lineup of cars idling with zero movement. Both of the main arteries out of this area were completely stopped. We can expect the same result if there is a wildfire in South Morrow Hills, where the proposed sprawl project is going unless you vote no on it. I can tell you that no matter what else you hear, hear this. If the wind had not changed, those people would have burned up inside their cars. Mass evacuations out of Fallbrook Bonzel and South Morrow Hills in Oceanside do not work. Please vote no on Measure L. Our next public comment is from Yvonne Obright. Good evening, mayor, city council members, city clerk, city treasurer, and Oceanside residents. The traffic calming the developers proposing for North River Farms is not enough to mitigate the 7,000 trips the development will bring. The widening of the college bridge consists of getting rid of the existing sidewalk and restriping the bridge with 11-foot lanes. They intend to cantilever the walkways off the existing bridge. North River Road will only be widened at the development, leaving bottlenecks for the residents. Throw in a couple of roundabouts, and they call it good. Pretty pictures not guarantee pretty situations. Our next public comment is from Sherry Mackin. Dear District 3 voter, my name is Sherry Mackin. I'm a 40-year resident of South O and a retired Oceanside teacher. I am running for District 3 City Council because my focus is on you and our neighborhoods, not special interests. I'm asking you for your vote as we must to change the way this council rolls. Obscene amounts of developer and special interest political action committee money has flowed and continues to flow into District 3's election. To date, over $40,000 of developer and special interest money is being spent to get their choice. The appointed council member, Ryan Keim, elected. I ask for your vote on November 3rd to show developers and special interests, Oceanside is no longer for sale. I appreciate your vote. The next public comment is from, I believe that graphic was for this comment. The next public comment is from Jody Williams. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Jody Williams, and I am a 32-year resident of Oceanside. Our upcoming election has a very serious matter to consider in the form of Measure L. Among the many deceptions and outright lies, the yes supporters espouse is that they are making a farm and saving farmland. The photo you are looking at shows the property in question. On the left is the actual farm as it currently looks. It has a statewide significant farm designation. It is actually an honest-to-goodness farm. The picture on the right is the exact same properly, property overlaid with the graphic of the planned housing development. 585 houses does not make a farm. What it makes is traffic congestion that the city planning staff analysis decreed cannot be offset, and the pollution created would be hazardous to breathe. The lack of adequate fire evacuation already exists, as evidenced by the lilac fire. We, the voting citizens of Oceanside, refuse to let an out-of-town billionaire developer shove this development down our collective throats. None of us want to pay even more taxes to make up for the shortfalls with which the developer will burden us. I urge no on L as the only reasonable vote. Respectfully, Jody Williams. The next, the last public comment comes from Jane Marshall. Dear council, earlier this year, the appointed mayor, Peter Weiss, announced at the January 8th council meeting that the referendum signature gatherers had forged his signature on the petition. It has yet to be disclosed how Peter Weiss, as the mayor, received this information. Unless authorized agents, any knowledge of whose signatures were on the ballot is illegal. Subsequent to this announcement, Oceanside citizens were sued and harassed with complaints by representatives of the North River Farms integral developer. Please conduct an investigation as to how the appointed mayor, Peter Weiss, received and announced his knowledge of this illegally gained information. Thank you, Jane Marshall, Oceanside resident. And that concludes the public comment.
So, Mr. Navarro, do you want to make any kind of little statement about you reading these next meetings?
Yes. So this will be the final meeting where I'm going to be reading comments like this. The next meeting on October 21st will be completely done on Zoom. It will still be broadcasted on KOCT, streamed on KOCT, and made available for YouTube, but the public can now make public comments on Zoom or by telephone live at the council meeting. So we will no longer be reading out public comments. If members want to come and attack council members or speak on the issues of the day, they could do so themselves via Zoom or by phone, in person and in real time as well. When they participate by Zoom, it will be done completely in real time. There'll be hardly any delay, and I will just call them as I would if they were here in the council chambers, and they can make their public comment, and then we can move on to the next speaker. And that way, it tremendously cuts down the amount of time staff devotes to processing public comments, because our Wednesdays is just processing public comments as they come in. But not only for the city clerk staff, but the other staff that clerk, the boards and the commissions that we have here in the council chambers, they too devote extreme amount of time processing the public comments for those meetings as well. So this will open it up, and it also opens up an opportunity for council to come and participate via Zoom, should you not be able to make it or have any COVID concerns. Council can also participate via Zoom, as well as city staff, applicants, appellants as well.
And I trust there will be comprehensive instructions in the agenda packet for the next meeting.
There will be, there will be instructions on how to sign up for Zoom, how to participate via Zoom, as well as proper legal noticing for the public hearings as well. And the city clerk's office is working hard on that.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, would they be allowed to attack the city clerk and the city treasurer too?
Yeah, if they want to.
City manager and city attorney, yeah.
So seeing as we got a ways to go to 6 o'clock, we will take a break until 6 o'clock, where we come back with our public hearings.
I've heard from the resistance of Oceanside High School, the general public, from the property owner, from the neighborhood, and staff.
Staff, the underlying property owner and management company, public.
I've heard from the public, the applicant, and I've gotten some emails.
Staff, public, applicant.
And I need to add applicant in there as well. With that, we will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Stephanie Saramantis with the Planning Department, and I will be presenting Conditional Use Permit 19-00020 and waiver of locational criteria for Left Coast LLC.
If I may, yeah.
Thank you. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit, CUP 19-00020, and waiver of locational criteria to allow a medical cannabis manufacturing facility within an existing building located at 1629 Ordway. Like I said, the projects located on Ordway, Oceanside Boulevard, the project proposes to subdivide the existing building into two tenant spaces with Left Coast occupying the southern portion. The new entrance and loading area will be on the west side of the building. This slide shows the surrounding uses, a residential district to the south, separated by the Sprinter railroad track, a church to the north across Oceanside Boulevard, a massage business in the center to the west. The facility would be a medical manufacturing facility only. The facility will operate Monday through Saturday and is not open to the public. The site is so limited industrial and has limited industrial zoning on adjacent parcels to the north, east, and west. There is also a residential zoning district to the northwest and to the south. As a regulated use, the project is subject to the buffer requirements in Article 36 of the zoning ordinance, which require cannabis businesses to be 1,000 feet from residential districts, religious facilities, and other regulated uses. This slide shows a 500 and 1,000-foot radius from the project site. The church to the north is within a 500-feet radius, and the massage business to the west and the residential districts to the...
Can you stop just a second? What is that noise?
It's the applicant's calling in. I'm muting them as they call in.
Okay. Sorry, I was... There was competing voices going on. Thank you.
No problem. The church to the north is within 500 feet, and the massage business to the west and the residential districts to the south and northwest are within 1,000 of the project site. As a result, the applicant must obtain approval of a waiver of location requirements in order to operate. Staff finds that the project complies with the general plan policies and that no harmful emissions or impacts would result, and that the waiver of locational criteria is justified due to the church and massage businesses being on Oceanside Boulevard. The project site is screened from Oceanside Boulevard by other industrial buildings. The railroad tracks to the south also create a barrier from the nearest residential uses to the south. Staff finds that the project meets the standards for a CUP. It is a manufacturing facility within an industrial district. The operation will not be detrimental to the public health or property, or surrounding properties. The facility is screened from Oceanside Boulevard and will not have any visible signage. The project is required to obtain a state license, which is currently inactive, but we understand will be reactivated once Left Coast has made all the onsite improvements needed for operations. A city local license is also required and must be renewed on an annual basis. Per the municipal code, the site is also required to be inspected on an annual basis. The applicant conducted community outreach, including a community meeting held January of this year. On August 10th, staff took the project to Planning Commission. On that date, they voted 3-3 to approve, and then 6-0 to continue the project and requested additional information. Staff brought back the project on August 24th. Staff and the applicant provided additional information, and the commission voted 5-1-1 to recommend approval. The project was noticed for the September 23rd City Council hearing, where it was continued per request of the association. The association has reached an agreement with the property owner of 1629 Ordway. Left Coast is a tenant. The board has approved the use pursuant to the CCNRs, and the property owner has agreed to pay the increased insurance premium. The association has asked that the city place a condition on Left Coast to also pay increased insurance premiums. However, staff has determined that the city has no legal basis for such a condition and that the issue is a civil private matter. These communications have been included as part of the public comments portion of the hearing. Thank you. I am available for questions. And the applicant has also... Oh, I'm sorry. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit, CUP 19-00020, and a waiver of locational criteria to allow a medical cannabis manufacturing facility within an existing building located at 2619 Ordway. Thank you. I'm available for questions. The applicant's also on the line and has prepared a presentation for the council.
So this would be the time for the applicant's presentation?
This is Gina Austin. Am I unmuted?
You are.
Perfect. Great, thank you very much. I will go ahead and start, and I cannot tell because the screens are delayed. Stephanie, is the PowerPoint up on the introductory cover slide?
It is, yes.
Perfect, great, thank you. We'll start with that. Good evening, my name is Gina Austin, and I will be providing an overview of the Left Coast team and the project. The owners, Alex Kometis, Colton Barity, and Left Coast Lead Manufacturer and Equipment Specialist, McCain Menderink, are all available on the phone to answer questions after this presentation should you have them. I will facilitate that and can answer most of them. Of the specific questions for the applicant, they are available here. Next slide, please. As Stephanie mentioned, the project is located at 1629 Ordway, and the suite is located towards the back of the building away from the street side. Our office had submitted a letter of support, and I'm not going to go back over all the material in the letter. It was submitted before the last council hearing where it was continued, but I would like to provide you some additional information about who Left Coast is, as well as additional support for the location waiver. Next slide, please. Left Coast is owned by Alex and Colton, as I mentioned. They've been operating legally compliant cannabis business since 2014, and they currently operate a legal cannabis facility in La Quinta. There is a letter of recommendation from the Assistant City Manager of La Quinta attached as Exhibit B to our letter of support, so you should have that in your pocket. In addition, Left Coast has hired McCain Menderink as the Chief Technology Officer because of his extensive experience and knowledge of manufacturing equipment and best practices in the industry. Left Coast will be building out this team. This is just the initial portion of the team, and upon approval, they will be filling it out with professional security company, employees that will be paid a living wage and significantly contributing to the job market here in Oceanside. I think it's really important to note that this business is 50% woman-owned and 50% veteran-owned, and it's a unique combination and gives them a lot of experience and a lot of insight into who needs medical cannabis. Next slide, please. The business operations. As was mentioned, this location is not open to the public. All of the operations are conducted indoors. This includes the pickup and delivery, or the pickup of products by the licensed distributors for testing, and the distribution of those products to the licensed retail facilities. So none of that occurs outside of the building envelope, and this is very unique for an operation. Most manufacturing facilities that you will find in neighboring cities, San Diego, La Mesa, and a few others, all have their manufacturing facilities indoors, but the pickup of the materials occurs outside. So this is a way of increasing safety, of keeping it out of the visual sight of other people, decreasing crime, and it's a great, unique operating environment for this company. They will initially start by packaging concentrate and flour. So at the beginning here, there will be no extraction equipment on site, and I don't know that there will ever be. We're not ruling it out, but it's certainly not one of the initial plans of the project. The premises includes 24-hour security surveillance, consistent with the Oceanside Municipal Code, and it will have a live stream accessible to the Oceanside Police Department via secure internet portal. Next slide, please. One of the comments that were received in the public comments, this is the only comment, negative comment that was received from any of the residences to the north or south, mentioned odor. And odor has not been an issue for Left Coast in their operations in La Quinta. It will not be a consideration here. The Left Coast will be installing at least three air filter 710 CFMs. These filters eliminate 99.5% of all odor using activated carbon. And the nice thing about these filters is if there's any residual smell, you just add more filters. So the more filters, the more reduction in smell. There have been no complaints in their La Quinta facility regarding odor, and of course, it's one of the conditions of the CUP that they not be a nuisance and not have odor. But their experience in La Quinta has helped them to create procedures such that smell does not escape the premises. And I think that's very important because it is the only opposition to this project aside from the youth group, which I'll talk about in a minute, which we're actually excited to have them out there advocating for keeping this out of the hands of children. So next slide, please. Community outreach. On January 24th, 2020, there was... Well, first, the flyers were mailed out to the neighbors within 1,500 feet of the project. We had the community outreach meeting. We had about 20 or so participants. They came to find out more information. Alex provided her personal phone number for follow-up. She spoke to a few of the people. While one person objected to cannabis just generally and was worried about the smell, no one else voiced any objections to the project. There was no objection from the residences. There was no objection from the church. And so I think it's important that while we've had notices up on the building with personal phone numbers, we've reached out to the neighborhood, we went door-to-door within the association complex, that this project is consistent with what people are expecting to see in the community, and we have not had strong objection. Next slide, please. In addition to their community outreach, they are actively... Left Coast has actively evolved in the community in Oceanside today. They're determined to be a good neighbor, and even though they're not operational, they have been actively involved in supporting the city of Oceanside. In April of this year, they donated 3,000 N95 masks to Oceanside's first responders, and in this month, they organized a beach cleanup, and they collected more than 32 pounds of trash from the Oceanside shoreline. Upon receiving their CUP, Left Coast commits to continuing its active involvement in the city of Oceanside. Many cities up and down the state of California have a requirement of this give back to the community. And while it's not a requirement in the city of Oceanside, Left Coast is committed to doing that and giving back to the city that they're operating in. So next slide, please. Path of travel. We agree with staff that all of the CUP findings and location waiver findings can be met. I just want to provide a little additional information with regard to the location waiver. So in this map, you can see the outer circle is 1,000 feet, and you can see there are residences within that 1,000-foot circle. While it's hard to read, on the left-hand side, far to the left-hand side, that is where the entrance to this neighborhood is. There's no way to get into the neighborhood without going that full distance, and that distance is approximately 1,900 feet from the proposed project. It's important, again, to note that no objection from any of the residents to the north in writing and email comments to the city, at least I haven't checked them since noon today, but as of all the comments to Planning Commission, all the comments to City Council, all of the comments that we received in our community outreach, no objections came from any of the residences to the north. Next slide, please. The second sensitive use to the north would be St. Margaret's Catholic Church, which is located on the other side of Oceanside Avenue, less than 1,000 feet as a crow flies. However, from door-to-door through the path of travel, St. Margaret's Church is over 1,000 feet, approximately 1,100-ish, and this is the Google Earth slide showing it at 11:4299. Next slide, please. So we went to Google Earth photos. If you're standing at the church parking lot, and you're at the edge of the parking lot, because that's the only place Google would allow me to do it, and I didn't have time to drive up there, and you're looking towards Ord, it's the bottom picture, you can't even see the building that we're going to be operating from. It is behind the building that you can see. If you're looking to the east and looking to the west, it is a multi-lane road, as you all know, and it's not anywhere near the church facility, at least from the perspective of somebody being at the church and being able to see it. Again, it's not... The facility is not open to the public and is expressly decided to be closed on Sundays when the church is most active. Next slide, please. Residential to the south. As noted by staff, there's also housing to the south of this project. A direct route would require crossing a ravine, the Sprinter tracks, and a chain link fence. The pedestrian path of travel to access the closest residence is about 1.7 miles. One resident in the housing to the south has objected to the project based on smell. I can say with certainty that if smell from this operation is reaching the housing to the south, we have much bigger problems, and this operation would not be operational at any level because the city would immediately shut something like that down. We have complete control of the odor, and that was the only objection from the south. Next slide, please. So the top of this slide shows standing... That's the building, 1629, and looking towards the residential. That's down at the end of the street. It's a cul-de-sac. When you take... The bottom slide is when you go down to the bottom, and you're standing at the end of the cul-de-sac, and you're looking at what you would have to cross over and get to the residential, the ravine, the Sprinter tracks, the chain link fence. So this is just to give those of you who haven't been out to the end of the Ord Street perspective of what it looks like when you are... And how far away we are. So we're hoping that we've answered some of the questions that you have regarding, you know, why the location waiver is appropriate. Let's go to the next slide on the licensing compliance slide, because this brings us to the final issue of concern related to Left Coast, and that's the prior violation. And while it's not related to the CUP findings at all, I do think it's important for us to provide you with an explanation and an understanding of what happened and why Left Coast is not a bad actor and is in fact a very good actor in this situation. Let's see. You're aware that the Oceanside process alone is a two-step process, and I think that was mentioned by Stephanie. Step one is to obtain a commercial cannabis business license, which they have and which has been renewed by the city, and step two is to obtain a CUP. So, you know, they... Left Coast received its commercial cannabis business license in May of 2019, and it immediately began processing its state license and CUP application. So that was over a year ago. Next slide, please. The disconnect occurs because the state will issue a state license based upon the city's local authorization and does not require the CUP to be issued or a certificate of occupancy to be obtained. So as part of the state application to the California Department of Public Health, which regulates this, the applicant is required to provide a premises diagram. And that diagram is the diagram that you have in the plans that were presented by staff, and it's consistent with the state regulations, and it has video cameras, and it's completely enclosed from any other business. It has commercial-grade locks. It's limited access areas. But that's how this will look when it's fully built out. At this point, it's not fully built out, and so the changes have to be made to the property in order to make it consistent with the state guidelines. And once it's all operational, generally the state comes in and takes a look and says, yes, everything's good. In this instance, there was some confusion between the state and another agency that regulates the track and trace program, and this is where the breakdown occurred, and that's with the metric system. Next slide, please. So what happened? The metric folks started telling Left Coast, both in email, and they do this with everybody as soon as you get your state license, that you have to be using the metric system. You have to put your inventory in the metric. And the CDPH doesn't take phone calls. They don't respond to emails, and so in order to avoid losing their license, Left Coast did what the emails were requiring them to do. They ordered tags. They ordered limited inventory to meet the requirements that they understood from metric, and then they made one batch of products. They entered everything into the metric system. They sent it out for testing. They got it, tested it, passed. They sent it to a licensed distributor, and they distributed it to nine separate state licensed retail facilities. Because this information was entered into metric, the state, CDPH, knew that the facility was operational and requested an inspection, which is their standard process. But when they went to do the inspection, they found what are correctable issues that arose out of the fact that Left Coast hasn't completed or even started its tenant improvement, meaning that there was another business on the same premises that wasn't separated, and that's not allowed to occur. So the state said, you're inactive. No fines are issued by the state. The license is currently listed as inactive. It will be reinstated. We've had conversations with the state and with staff as soon as the building is built out to the way it needs to be built out. I think it's important to note that city staff has reviewed this. They understand the situation behind it. They understand that there was not a bad intent, and it was correctable, not an intent to circumvent city licensing, and the local license has been renewed. And upon issuance of the CUP, we... The applicant will be able to correct these issues and have the state license. They can't operate under any circumstances without that license, and we've agreed to, for lack of a better word, open the kimono, let staff in at any point in time in order to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And so I think that, or I hope that what that did was give you a little bit of context as to how this violation occurred, what happened. I'm happy to answer any questions. The state and local licensing scenario is very complicated, but, you know, last slide, please, Stephanie. In conclusion, you know, that licensing issue isn't, you know, part of the CUP findings. I think all of the findings can be made. I think, I believe staff provided good information to support that. It's consistent with the ordinance, the general plan. It's not detrimental to public health and safety, and it's not detrimental to neighboring property. Similarly, the approval of the location requirements can be made. And so we respectfully ask that you support staff's recommendation and approve both the CUP and the waiver of location requirement. More available for questions.
Thank you, and you have about four minutes left for rebuttal. Before we get moving any further, Councilmember Rodriguez, would you like to provide your disclosures?
Yes, so staff, staff reports, the public, and the applicant. Thank you.
Mr. Navarro?
The City Clerk's Office received 82 voicemails and comments on item number 15. 39 were for, 20 were against, and one had no position. 22 have asked to be read into the record. Our first public comment is from Carlo S. "Very excited about Left Coast's LLC facility. Have been waiting for years for this time to come. So happy that medical marijuana is being taken seriously. We need these facilities around so our medicine can be as high-quality as possible. These people aren't criminals. They are only trying to help others. I'm thinking that having a marijuana business in Oceanside would be no different than having smoke shops or other alternative stores. At least marijuana can actually help people. Wonderful news. Can't wait to hear the outcome on this." Carlo S. Our next public comment is from Lynette Lyles. "Dear Oceanside Board members, I want to vote yes for Left Coast LLC. Thank you." Lynette Lyles, Paris, California. Our next public comment is from Thomas Grant. "Approve 1629 Ordway conditional use permit. I am a disabled war veteran and use cannabis daily to help with my PTSD. They had a beach cleanup in Oceanside today and was able to meet the owner and company. Great people. Tom, retired. Once a Marine, always a Marine. Served 2005 to 2011." Our next public comment is from Millie Martin. "Can we get a yes vote on COP number 19-0020? I'm tired of these places of businesses getting shut down when all they want to do is operate like any other business. I understand some do not like to follow protocol as long as all requirements are met, but there is no issue that I can see. Everyone is using cannabis these days. Think the time of prohibition is ending. Thank you, City Council, for giving people the opportunity they deserve. Take care." Millie Martin, Riverside, California. Our next public comment is from Stacy Schneider. "Hello, I support Left Coast Project in the city of Oceanside. I've been using cannabis for 10-plus years now. Medical cannabis has helped me grow into a better person. I believe this project is in a location that is ideal with Oceanside plan. I listened to the Planning Commission meeting last month and believe the HOA Association should have no bearing on this project. The applicant was licensed a year before they passed an amendment to their ordinance changing it. The HOA waited almost two years after the applicant first contacted them to change their CCR. This does not seem like a legitimate change done on the HOA and should have no effect on the approval of their CUP. Thank you for your time." Stacy Schneider. Next public comment is from Anlu. "I am an owner of home nearby. I do not approve of this COP request because it is not consistent with the general plan. Cannabis has adverse impacts on... of inharmonious uses, located close to neighborhoods and schools, inadequate off-street parking or loading overflow of cars into immediate residential neighborhood." Anlu. Next public comment is from Mark Creamer. "Oceanside City Council, I am Mark Creamer. Having been using medical marijuana for the last five years now, supporting a plant that really works miracles is never a problem. Left Coast LLC gained my support. Would be nice seeing more cannabis businesses get their required permits and start being more professional." Our next public comment is from Erica Leary. "Approval of this COP would send a clear signal that Oceanside has no intention of critically reviewing and regulating cannabis businesses, and if an applicant just waits long enough, the city will give a license to anyone. The grounds for denial are indisputable and include a suspension of their state license by the California Department of Public Health detailed in a letter dated April 17th describing multiple violations, including inadequate security, and included in the May 18th staff report, which originally recommended denial, attached as reference since it is no longer included in the staff report. Failure to meet multiple location requirements. The proposed location is less than 1,000 feet from residents, another regulated use, and 350 feet from St. Margaret's Church. Staff conclusions that there will be no impact is not based on fact. Homeless and loitering are already an issue along the Sprinter track and in the business park, and cannabis businesses throughout the county have been victims of armed robberies. A thorough analysis of this potential, given the applicant plans to make highly potent THC vape cartridges, will not include it. The proposed location is in violation of the Oceanside Gateway Business Park CCNRs, and their board has urged denial of this application. Ignoring property owner rules and recommendations set a dangerous precedent. As a resident within the public notice area, the applicant's attempt at public outreach was insufficient and misleading. I received their January 24, 2020, letter, open house notice, which implied they were already permitted and to come in and ask questions. I received a similar postcard September 2nd stating that they were both a manufacturer and a distributor joining the neighborhood and to email them support attached for reference. Granted a CUP in an unsuitable location to an applicant who has demonstrated an inability to follow state or local regulations, and that is two minutes, and the rest of the comments will be made available online, including the attachments." Our next public comment is from Colleen Galloway.
"Good morning. Regarding the upcoming council meeting, I would like to support Left Coast LLC. Former business owner myself..."
Former business owner myself, I know the pain it takes to get approved for these things. Hopefully, I am one of many who support this. Wish you a nice day. Colleen Galloway. Our next public comment is from Tamara Sweet. Greetings, City Council. I would like to voice my opinion for CUP 000020. Left Coast, I am a medical cannabis patient and use cannabis daily to help with my Crohn's disease. Cannabis is a miracle medicine grown from the earth. I think this business would be a good addition to Oceanside. I would like to see dispensaries in the future as well. Please support this project. Sincerely, Tamara Sweet. Our next public comment is from Madison Matea. My name is Madison Matea, and I am a senior at Oceanside High School and vice president of the club Be the Resistance. Over the past several weeks, we have strived to personally express to you our concerns as minors for the new marijuana manufacturing business Left Coast. Its plan to manufacture high potency marijuana vaping cartridges is simply not justifiable within the medical license it is applying for because vaping can have no true medical benefit. Moreover, it puts Oceanside teens at risk of access by being less than 2,000 feet from residential areas, St. Margaret's Church, and a massage business. With marijuana vaping devices rising in popularity more than any other product since my freshman year, I have learned that my peers access such devices through the legal market and medical marijuana cards. This means that Left Coast, without adequate safety standards, can become a source of addiction for youth and Oceanside as a whole. On behalf of the BTR Club and Oceanside High, I urge you to stand up to the Left Coast manufacturer and deny its approval. Please not ignore the signs, which include three additional locational waivers, violation of business park rules, and notice of license suspension that business is not the one Oceanside needs. And please remember the next generation of Oceanside leaders when you decide whether to approve or deny. Sincerely, Madison Matea. Our next public comment is from Becky Rapp. Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. As a parent and community member, I am deeply concerned with the negative impacts of marijuana and marijuana applicants who feel they're above the law. This proposed marijuana manufacturing facility is in direct violation with the CCNRs of this business park. The CCNRs clearly prohibit marijuana business of any type. This business park contains more than 80 different businesses that play a significant role in the city of Oceanside, one being a drug and alcohol rehabilitation center. Councilmember Rodriguez has previously referred to marijuana businesses who are not law-abiding or those who bend the rules thugs. This applicant falls into this category as only a few months ago, they were given a notice of suspension failing to comply. Failure to implement a security plan, failure to comply with video surveillance requirements, and failure to keep required records of sales and invoices and receipts. Attempting to apply for a permit that is in indirect violation of CCNRs is one more example. My question is, why would the city even consider such an applicant and waste staff's time and taxpayer dollars? This applicant feels they are above the law. I urge the City Council to deny this project and send a clear message that you expect applicants for marijuana businesses in your city to already be law-abiding before a permit is given. Thank you. Our next public comment is from Joanne Cartel. Thank you for reading. Left Coast extracts will get my support for the upcoming council meeting. Please allow medical marijuana facilities. This medicine helps a lot of people. Giving Left Coast a place to operate under the correct guidelines would be the best bet. Appreciate your time in regards. Joanne Cartel, Murrieta, California. Next public comment is from Polly Darden. Good morning. I would like to support Left Coast LLC cannabis business are booming and will continue to grow with time. This opens job and funding for various things in the city. Love the plan. Polly S. Darden. Our next public comment is from Teri Ann Skelly. Good evening, City Councilmembers. This is Teri Ann Skelly, parent who also works in Oceanside. Tonight, you are considering a land use decision for the pot factory at 1629 Ordway. As you have learned, it is directly across from a church and a dance studio, residences and many pre-existing businesses, which have on multiple occasions expressed their dismay. When the pot factory Left Coast was considered at Planning Commission, it was argued by their pot attorney that the five violations given to it by the California Department of Public Health were just honest mistakes. We are talking five violations by an experienced marijuana business owner. These were no mistakes. These five violations were serious and dangerous to public health and safety. Oceanside is well-known for protecting its citizens and has gone the extra mile during this pandemic to assist them. The city does not need a pot factory in town that has so egregariously violated public health and safety regulations. I respectfully suggest that the City Council deny this CUP. Teri Ann Skelly. Our next public comment is from Joslyn F. I will vote yes for this city council meeting. Most people aren't willing to go to the efforts of acquiring the license or permits to operate a legal business. To see Left Coast go the extra mile and really have care about their operation makes me want to support them even more. I think this plan will work out great. I appreciate you reading my note. Enjoy your evening. Joslyn F. Our next public comment is from Peggy Walker. Good evening, Council. As a public policy advocate, I urge a no vote on the CUP for the Ordway proposal for a medical pot manufacturing facility for the following reasons. It does not meet minimum separation distance requirements. The applicant has a reputation for multiple violations, including suspension of its state license and should not be rewarded for illegal behavior, and it's strongly opposed by nearby residents, businesspeople, the business park HOA, a neighboring church, and the majority of speakers at a recent public hearing. Further, it's concerning that one of the main products to be manufactured, vaping products, have nothing to do with medical treatment, but in fact are detrimental to public health. The CDC, Surgeon General, and other state vaping and vape products are extremely harmful, especially in this time of COVID, and warn against their use, stating they lower immune response and the body's ability to fight infections, cause popcorn lung, produce a poisonous liquid that contains formaldehyde, produce aerosol that contains medical particulates that penetrate deep into the respiratory system, and increase risk of pneumonia. These products use lithium ion powered batteries that can blow up and cause injury and result in hazardous waste, and vape products are not a legitimate nicotine cessation method. Acceptance of a waiver of locational criteria on this project would not be in the interest of the public. Thank you for considering the reasons for not approving this project. Regards, Peggy Walker. Our next public comment is from Barbara Gordon. You have to ask yourself why a city council and city staff would allow a business with questionable business practices to receive a CUP permit. Receiving a notice of violation from the state should have automatically disqualified them from ever applying for a CUP. The location of this business alone should have disqualified them with proximity to the church adjoining neighborhoods and in opposition to the business park's own rules. There are good reasons why there are restrictions around where marijuana businesses can be located. Marijuana is a Schedule I drug because of its high potential for abuse and the potential to create severe psychological and physical addiction, especially with the high potency THC. The commercialization of marijuana results in negative consequences for public health and safety. The responsibility of the city council is to look out for all Oceanside businesses and residents. Why does the city continue to be influenced by the marijuana industry? Barbara Gordon. Our next public comment is from Timothy Leary. The red flags for this application are overwhelming. It requires three separate locational waivers due to noncompliance with zoning regulations. The applicant received a notice of violation from the California Department of Public Health. There have been an ongoing dispute between the applicant and the business park property management, including the fact that the management's insurance carrier will not renew their policy due to the risk of this business type. In addition, the applicant's products and marketing, marijuana vaping cartridges, and a website featuring young surfers, more closely resembles jewel pods designed to hook kids than therapeutic medicine. Denying this application would demonstrate a commitment to uphold the rules and intent this council previously approved. Approving the CUP would signal that the marijuana industry has taken over Oceanside politics, and they and their out-of-town attorneys are now writing the rules. You'll decide what lesson I may be teaching my high school government students. Tim Leary, Oceanside resident within 1,000 feet of application and high school teacher. Our next public comment is from Sadie Lamalgah, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing your last name incorrectly. My name is Sadie Lamalgah, and I'm a member of Be the Resistance Club at Oceanside High School. Marijuana vaping devices are a dangerous source of addiction for youth in Oceanside. However, Left Coast will be manufacturing these devices, including marijuana cartridges, pens, and marijuana flavored items if its conditional use permit is approved. These products should be banned from being manufactured at Left Coast as we, the youth, are not being involved in the decision-making process, and the marijuana vaping business will only hurt our generation. As high school students, we have been victims of businesses like Left Coast, which claims it does not target youth, but photos attached illustrate the contrary. The City Council has a responsibility to create a healthy environment for the entire community. Money should not be a factor to grant a CUP to a business that may contribute to a social instability for us and future generations. Public health should be a number-one priority. Already in the time I've been in high school, I've seen people using products like the ones Left Coast has to offer, in addition to hearing many stories of my peers using. I've known family who turned to and paid an older friend to get pens just to smoke for the fun of it. Friends I thought I knew rather well found some way to get these types of devices and began using them daily. Now we are just strangers. Not to mention, these stories I've heard are just students bragging about smoking such devices, like what Left Coast has to offer, in a classroom or in the bathroom, believing it's cool rather than thinking of the consequences it will have later on in life, which is why I urge you to deny the CUP to Left Coast while a stronger, more trustworthy plan is enacted for preventing youth access to vaping devices. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration of this important matter. Respectfully, Sadie Lamalgah. Our next public comment is from Kelly McCormick. This is Kelly McCormick. I run a youth mentoring program, and I support the right of families and business owners to stand up against the bullying tactics of the MJ industry. Because of this, I oppose the approval of conditional use permit for the Left Coast MJ business in the Oceanside Gateway Business Park. The stated objective of the general land use element is to minimize conflict with adjacent land uses. MJ businesses are prohibited by the CCNRs of the business park. The park board previously requested a denial of the application. That request was repeatedly denied. Residents of the neighborhoods surrounding Ordway also have spoken against the application. It is within 1,000 feet of St. Margaret's Church, a dance studio, and private family homes. All of these factors should disqualify this location from consideration. On top of that, Left Coast has a troubling reputation. Their state license was suspended due to multiple violations. They will tell you it was a clerical error. Of course, that's what they'll say when millions of dollars in MJ profits are at stake. Unfortunately, the business park, the church, the dance studio, and the nearby families don't have the resources to fight back. That takes money and time. Instead, they must rely on you to make decisions on their behalf, using public health, safety, and the city's own distance regulations to guide your decisions. Our final public comments from Mark Campbell. City Council and Oceanside residents, I am Mark Campbell, the owner of 1629 Ordway, which is the property that Left Coast LLC is applying for a conditional use permit for their cannabis operations. I am in total agreement with Left Coast LLC getting their city approval for the conditional use permit and the operation of their cannabis manufacturing business. Alexandria has worked tirelessly for approximately two years to get every license and permission for this venture. She has done it in the most inclusive and respectful way. Donors of Left Coast LLC are the most knowledgeable people in the business regarding safety, security, and regulation. Sincerely, Mark A. Campbell, Lamar Oceanside LLC. And that concludes the public comment.
With that, we will come back to the applicant. I believe you have just about four minutes left. If you have any rebuttal comments that you'd like to make. You're on.
Okay. I couldn't tell if I, there's a little bit of a lag here even over the phone. All right. Just a few quick things that I'd like to point out. One is that it's important to note that the association and the property owner have come to an agreement. There is not really a mechanism for the tenant to have a recorded document, which is what the association wanted. So the property owner, because it's recorded against the property, and the association. So the use is allowed, this particular use for this particular location, because the association had the ability to do that. The second thing I want to note is that you have three groups of people who talked in opposition. One of them is the group of women who speak out at every single hearing. They dislike cannabis. They're advocating for it not being here. That's Becky Rapp, Teri Ann Skelly, Peggy Walker, Barbara Gordon, Kelly McCormick. This is not a referendum on whether or not cannabis should be allowed. That has been approved by the city. There is a mechanism for it, and so the fact that there are people who do not like cannabis shouldn't be a consideration in the council's decision-making. Finally, I want to point out the misrepresentation from Mr. Leary, or Leary, I'm not sure, that states that he is within the 1,000 feet. He is not. He is within the 1,500 feet noticing, but his property is 1,280 feet away. So he's outside that 1,000-foot residence. And so I just want to make sure that the council understands that when I said that we didn't have any opposition except for one person who was within that 1,000 foot, and that is Ms. Joanna Allen, and it was a letter from way before the first council hearing, maybe even planning commission, and make sure that you know that. I believe that the findings can be made, and the objections that you heard have nothing to do with the findings that are necessary to be made, and we request your support. Thank you.
And with that, we will close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. And this is a question for the applicant. Ma'am, during your presentation, you indicated you were going to respond to the concerns from the youth group, which is Be the Resistance, having to do with, you know, their concerns for access to youth, to underage, to anyone who cannot actually buy these products. Specifically, their concerns are with vaping and vaping products. Can you address that, please? You indicated you were going to do that and even praise them for, you know, participating and protecting youth from these kind of products.
Yes, I'm sorry. I missed that piece of it. I forgot about it. One of the things that we've found that works most successfully in other jurisdictions, you know, I work in more than 25 jurisdictions in California and seven different states. And I can tell you that the most successful processes that we've found to get youth not to be involved is to work with other youth groups. And so what we would like to be able to do would be to work with Be the Resistance. It may be contrary to what they originally thought, how they would go about it, but to work with them and helping to provide training to the youth, because the youth are going to trust them, and they're not going to trust us. And so that's one of the ways that we've found that it's been very successful. As far as their concerns about vaping and other products, we're the wrong target. We manufacture and distribute to retail facilities. So if anybody is going to be getting that product, like getting from their friend who's over 18, who has a medical card or something like that, they're not getting it from us. They're getting it from other, the retail facilities, because this licensee is not open to the public and actively is involved in making sure that the youth are not targeted. Alex and Colton have many, I don't know if it's three or four children, they have a lot of children, and they absolutely do not want to see youth involved in vaping in any way. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. But with respect to vaping products, when you did the presentation, you indicated that there was a certain, that the majority of the manufacturing was going to be at a certain step, not even extracting, at least for the, at the beginning. So you didn't mention anything about manufacturing, like vaping products. Are you going to, is that part of the business plan at some point?
So there's two pieces. Let me, I don't want to not answer your question, but I want to make sure that I'm clear. There's two parts. There's two parts to the vaping piece. One is the extraction of the cannabis oil from the cannabis plant, and the other part is putting that manufactured oil into the cartridges that become the vape cartridge. So there are two steps. What I was referring to is we're absolutely not doing the first part, probably not at any time, but absolutely not now. The second part, they haven't made a business decision as to yet. That is a business model of what they're doing in La Quinta, so we're not necessarily sure that it needs to move to Oceanside, but we don't want to be prohibited from doing that if the business model makes sense. So at this point, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay. So all you're saying at this point is it's not anticipated at the beginning, but you want to be able to do that sometime in the future?
For the, I want to be able to do--
The vaping products?
Yeah, absolutely.
The cartridges?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So a question for staff. We are constantly reviewing, we will be reviewing, the vaping concerns and possibly passing legislation at some point. Whether it, you know, whether we wait to see what happens at the state level or the feds, this is something that is of great concern to the community in having, giving access to youth. Is there something that we're anticipating doing?
Councilmember Sanchez, Mayor, and councilmembers, as you're aware, the council did adopt the tobacco retailer license last month in order to restrict youth access to tobacco products, including vaping products. And since the state had adopted a statewide ban on flavored tobacco products, including vaping, we felt that that issue was addressed. However, it's come to our attention that there is an effort underway to qualify a referendum on that state action, and so staff will monitor that. And should that action, should that state law not proceed, we could be bringing forward a recommendation to council for a local ordinance, which some other local cities have adopted.
Okay. So that was on tobacco, but does that actually apply to cannabis?
Correct. Tobacco products does include cannabis vaping products.
It does. Correct.
I don't know. This business is required to get a local license, which they've secured and renewed, and then your conditional use permit. The local license is renewed on an annual basis. My understanding is the tobacco retail license applies to tobacco retailers, including those retailers who sell vape products, but it would not apply to a business that's manufacturing the type of products that this applicant is proposing to manufacture. So no, this applicant would not be required to get a tobacco retail permit. They would be required to get a local license, which they've done, and that has to be renewed annually. And of course, if they're, I'm sorry.
So the applicant basically said, look, you are actually approaching the wrong step because we're the manufacturer, we're not the retailer. That would be an issue for a retailer. Say we have it in Oceanside, we decide we don't want vaping products at all, and if we were to pass that kind of a law, it would not impact them. It would impact, it would be something that would be impacted at the retail.
Right. We don't allow any retail, cannabis retailers at this time, other than the non-storefront M-type-nine facility that you previously approved. But the city has not permitted, and our ordinance does not allow for a local license for retail cannabis business.
Right. And it wouldn't be something by delivery that we would do either?
Well, the M-type-nine storefront, I don't think there's any prohibition on that delivery for--
On delivering vaping products?
Not to my knowledge.
So is that perhaps the issue here, that the concern is that if there is, but this is not a delivery, this is pure manufacturing? Right?
That's right. This is a manufacturing and distribution approval. It's not a, it's not a retail establishment, so they're not selling vaping products to the public.
Okay. I think that that is where the objections are by the public, by, at least by the youth that I spoke with, Be the Resistance is, you know, specifically, very specifically addressed to vaping. Cannabis has already been legalized. The city has decided to go forward on manufacturing. So I am going to move approval of the conditional use permit and waiver of locational criteria for this, for this business. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Just want to thank the public for their concerns and their comments in reference to this manufacturing business. Our city's pretty built out, and the way it's set up, it's difficult for these types of businesses to find the ideal, perfect location. And so this is something we have to work through and go through the public process to ensure that we have the barriers and the restrictions in place to mitigate the impacts and also have the opportunity to, you know, pull back if things are not in compliance with what our, the city attorney's office has put together in those negotiations. So with that being said, again, a lot of the concerns from the community were in reference to access, retail, and not specific to this type of business. Manufacturing cannabis in the state of California is a legal business. We are locally regulating that business through this process, and they found a location, and I support anything that will combat the black market. The black market of these sales is thriving. It's 70% of, you know, the movement with drugs, and it's because of the black market our children, I have seven, are getting access to these drugs. And so anything we can do on a local level to create a legal, licensed, viable pathway that can combat the black market, I'm going to support. And so I would like to second Councilmember Sanchez's motion on this, on this location and on this CUP. Thank you.
Mayor West, I just wanted to clarify. I think I, when I was answering Councilmember Sanchez's question earlier, I said that this was a CUP for manufacturing and distribution. It is only for manufacturing. There's a separate CUP, I believe, that's being proposed for distribution, but that's not before you. So, thank you.
And I'd just like to make a comment. I understand a number of the objections that we had in regards to specific opposition to the cannabis industry as a whole. I understand that there are people who have opposition to tobacco products and alcohol products. And as Councilmember Rodriguez just mentioned, in California, the cannabis business is legal. And as much as people would not like to see them here, I understand that they have an ability to come in, and I think we've done a good job in regulating and identifying issues surrounding the manufacturing. And I don't feel that there's any risks to the youth for having access to any of those products from this business, because it is not a retail establishment, so I'll be supporting that motion as well. Deputy Mayor Feller. Sorry.
Thank you for the applicant. Can this be converted into recreational use type of manufacturing?
Councilmember Feller, I can respond to that, councilmember. At this time, the city of Oceanside does not allow any recreational manufacturing of cannabis. So at this time, no. If the city were ever in the future to change the ordinances, it's a possibility, but at this time, no.
Okay. Well, the way it's going, that'll be coming. The black market's going to be there no matter what. This is a gateway to, for young people to get into drug use, and we're perpetuating this with just even accepting part of this. I think the manufacturing, if that's all it is, why can't it just stay in La Quinta? If the public can't go in? These vaping products that are being manufactured are easy to use even in the classroom, and teachers have told me that that is something that is easily done in the classroom with The waivers, could you put up on the screen? I want to see that circle of, again, please. So in, within 1,000 feet, there are, if that's, is that the dimensions of that circle?
Councilmember Feller, councilmembers, the smaller circle in the center, that's 500 feet, and the larger circle is 1,000.
Okay. So there are quite a few houses that are within that walkable zone should this ever decide to give more permission to this, this owner. I just, I think we're giving up on our children and grandchildren if we approve this and anything coming down the road. The kids are using vaping and tobacco. Why would they stop there if they can go to marijuana? Medical marijuana is what they said everything is all about, and it's still something that sticks in my craw because I allowed it to go forward in, well, several years ago now. I don't believe that this is good for any, any of our children, and I have, I only have three kids, but I do have a lot of grandkids, and they're all looking for leadership, and they're all looking for people to look up to. Michael, and Hannah, and Keiko, and Madison from the resistance group, they're serious about this, and they see it firsthand in their, in their group of friends and people that are involved in their school day-to-day. They've been consistent about not allowing this kind of thing going forward. So I'm gonna, I can't, I can't support this. It would be pretty easy for them to stay in La Quinta and manufacture there. So, thanks.
Councilmember Keim?
I'm not going to speculate on whether this could turn into retail. Those are decisions we can make down the road. I also think the location, I don't have a concern with that. I do have one major concern, though, and that's with advertising so far. I've done a little research, and from what I've seen, to me, it looks like it very clearly targets youth, juveniles. So I have a question for the applicant. Can you, can you explain your marketing, specifically on Instagram? Just looking at it, to me, you know, you can't tell the difference if that's a high school kid on a skateboard. I just, that really concerns me. And this is not a marijuana question. I don't have, we've approved other businesses. This is not about marijuana. I'd be asking the same question if it was tobacco, or a bar, or alcohol. It's, this is about encouraging, and it's, and I understand this is not retail, but this is encouraging youth use of marijuana, which is what we're trying to avoid, and I'm concerned about that. So could you respond, please?
Yes. Am I off muted again?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Keim, we share your concerns regarding youth. All of the, so we have a social media director. All of the models and actors in the social media are over the age of 21. Most of them have tattoos, as you can see in the, in the advertising and social media. We require all of the state and local, or state requirements to verify that you're over 21. Even though this is medical, they could advertise to 18s, they do not. And the state also monitors, they have a provision in the Bureau of Cannabis Control Regulations regarding advertising, and it's very subjective. And the state says, if we think your advertising is attractive to children, so you can't have cartoons, and you can't have a variety of things, but they also have this catch-all provision. If we think your advertising is attractive to children for any reason, you are in trouble, and you cannot have that. The state is well aware of our advertising at this point, because they came in and did the inspection. And there has not been any allegations that the advertising is attractive to children. Now, I'm older, and I can tell you that everybody looks like a child to me these days. But, you know, we are, we are aiming to make sure that it is not. We, we heard some concerns. We are going to double up. We've had meetings since we heard these concerns with the social media director, making sure that they should get models that are a little bit older. So I think that they, you know, they are actively working to stay away from youth. They're not targeting youth. And if, I don't know how much you went through their social media, but they had a, one of those, the skateboard boy, that was a sponsored video to help him pursue his dream of a skateboarding career. He's over 21. And then, you know, at the end of one of those, there is an anti-kid, anti-smoking part of that social media, which says, you know, smoking's not cool, kids over, under, you know, I don't know the exact words, and I don't want to say something inaccurate in the record, but it is very much a concern. And if the city wants to come back and say, Left Coast, your social media is concerning to me because of this, we will absolutely, you know, work with the city to make sure that it--
Okay. Okay. I just, my concern, I'm sorry to interrupt. You have a big reach on here. It's 66, more than 66,000 followers, and, you know, I'm looking at it right now, and there are several pictures, or I could not tell. You know, as an officer, we had to make those decisions if you saw someone underage going into a bar or having alcohol, so I'm familiar with that. I just, I think before it came to us today, these are things that should have been addressed. So I do have concerns. I don't have, some of the other things, not as much, but if we are going to, you know, we need to make the first approvals of these, the best examples for the, you know, the rest of the process going down the road. So I can't--
Is there something, is there something we could do to make it more comfortable for you?
Yeah, I would say redesign the social media and go a different direction. But that's, you know, my, in the purview of the CUP, you know, it specifically will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons, so that does concern me a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. There's no other lights. Motion approved. Three, two. Keim, Feller, no. With that, we'll go to item 16, which is adoption of a resolution for a tentative map development plan and use permit and regular coastal permit for a three-unit condominium project at 410 North Tremont. And we'll open a public hearing and start with disclosures.
I think we had a couple or three emails.
Staff and public.
Staff and those same emails.
Public?
Staff. Staff.
Sorry about that. Good evening, council, members of the public. I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present agenda item number 16 for 410 North Tremont Townhomes. The synopsis here is staff in the downtown advisory recommend that the community development commission adopt a resolution approving a tentative-- commission adopt a resolution approving a tentative parcel map, development plan, and conditional use permit, well, as a regular coastal permit for the development of a three-unit condominium complex located at 410 North Tremont Street. A little background on the site, the site is .5 acres and is currently vacant. The application was submitted back in April of 2020, as stated by the entitlements, and on July 22, 2020, the downtown advisory recommended approval to the city council by a unanimous 6-0 vote with Roxanne Franklin absent. So, the site, like I said, is located at 410 North Tremont. It's also within the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The site is zoned within the downtown district, sub-district nine, which permits commercial developments, mixed uses, single-family row homes, and multifamily developments along Tremont and North Freeman Street with approval of a use permit. Here's an image of the existing site. Like I said, it is vacant. It's, uh, measures 50 by 100. Vehicle access to the site is at the rear alley. The site is surrounded by row home development to the north. Single family, a single family and a multifamily complex directly to the south. There is a mixed-use development just located directly east across the alley, and some more row home developments directly to the west. Here's an image of the site plan. They're proposing a 10,522 square foot townhome. Unit sizes range from 2,455 for unit one, about 3,200 square feet for unit two, and 32 square feet, 3,200 square feet for unit three. Here's an image of the, the architecture design. It's a contemporary type design, which houses each one of these in a kind of a tiered level. The garages would be accessed off the rear alley and configured in a tandem configuration. Each unit would have their own two-car garage. Also, each unit would be comprised of three bedrooms and three and a half baths. The building is three stories with a roof deck. The roof deck access structure has been carefully designed to ensure that they don't protrude above the 35-foot height limit. They're actually having the structure, the stairwell just daylight to the, the actual ground level of the roof. The architectural elements have been carefully designed to provide, like I said, a conceptual or contemporary design that enhances and not only complements the site, but also the neighborhood. Here's an images of the downward level there. It's actually considered a basement, but they're able to squeeze in the level down below. And like I said, the access to the garage just was off the alley. And the roof deck. When analyzing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following. It achieves a balance of residential land uses, consistent with the neighborhood. The neighborhood's somewhat of an eclectic design. You have multifamily, single-family row homes in the area. This is pretty consistent with the multifamily-type developments. Provides a good transition between, like I said, the existing high-density and single-family. The proposed residential use, a number of units is compatible and appropriate for the area. They're proposing a density per acre of 25.7 with their three units, which is under the allowable 29 base density. And it complies with the downtown zoning ordinance. As condition, the project needs the required findings for development compatibility. Since it's in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal area, we analyzed it per the local coastal program. There's no public coastal access impacts, nor is there any public coastal view impacts or public parking. But with that, staff and the downtown advisory recommend that the community development commission adopt a resolution approving the tentative map, development plan, conditional use permit, and regular coastal permit for, for the development of three-unit condo complexes located at 410 North Tremont. This concludes our presentation. The applicant is also on the line, so if they have any questions, they can ask for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant prepared to make a presentation, or are they just sitting by for questions?
I believe they're just going to be available for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any public?
We received three emails just right before this item was presented, but none of those emails have directed the city clerk to read them into the record, but they will be made available tonight on the city's website.
And with that, we will close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. So, usually, reports indicate the height and limits, and what, how high this is, and, you know, I did hear that there are no structures above for the rooftop, rooftop deck, because they basically are at level with the roof. It kind of dips in, is what I, seemed to me, from the pictures. So, what, what is, what are the height limits, and how, how tall is this building?
Councilmember Sanchez, the maximum height is 35 feet. They're basically at the 35-foot height limit with the three stories. Like I said, there's no, they're not exceeding the height with any type of roof-
Nothing goes above 35 feet, not even-
Nothing's above 35.
An antenna of any kind or anything, right?
Exactly.
Not an umbrella, anything. All right. Yeah, it, it seemed like it was, you know, kind of contained within the height limit, but the, the actual report doesn't even mention the heights, you know, discussion about heights and, you know, the limits and, and what this does, and looking at the drawings, some of them are very difficult to read. Even when I was trying to blow them up, it was kind of difficult to read. So, I'm going to go ahead and move approval.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Thank you. I think I'm still steaming from the last item, but I did, I glazed over thinking about the parking for this.
You were steaming or vaping?
Hmm?
Steaming or vaping over the last item?
I was steaming.
No, he was boiling.
Given up on our children. Anyway, can you tell me about the parking, please?
Sure. Per the downtown zoning ordinance, these types of developments are required to have, since they're over one bedroom, they need to have two parking stalls. They provide a two-car garage, actually, it's a larger two-car garage, but in a tandem configuration, one behind one another. And they have ample enough room for individuals to go around. They actually have areas for additional storage, so it's quite a, a large tandem garage configuration for each unit.
Okay, thank you. I second it.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion approved, 5-0.
Don't go anywhere. Go to 17, which is a resolution approving a tentative map development plan and conditional use permit for construction of a mixed-use development with five residential condominium units at 513 North Freeman, and we'll start with disclosures.
Did I tell you this guy graduated from El Camino High School? Staff, all kinds of input from public.
Staff and public. Staff.
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 He also played for the Chiefs.
All right, thank you. Our members of the council and members of the public, I'm Scott Nightingale, here to present agenda item number 17 for the 513 North Freeman mixed-use project. Staff recommends that the community development commission adopt a resolution approving the tentative parcel map, development plan, use permit to allow the demolition of two residential structures on site and construct a mixed-use development with five residential condo units and two commercial units, all within a freestanding three-story building located at 513 North Freeman. The tentative parcel map is to enable the five-unit, unit map with the commercial units and the associated parking and common areas. Development plan is for the actual construction of the building, the 20,000, 175-square-foot building. The use permit is to allow the construction of the vertical mixed-use project, so just for the mixed-use component itself. Little background on the site, the site's 7,500-square-foot parcel located on northwest corner of Sport Fisher Drive in North Freeman, and currently exists with two single-family homes. On August 15, 2019, the application was submitted for this tentative map, development plan, and use permit, and we took this project forward on July 22, 2020, to the downtown advisory committee, where they unanimously recommended approval by a 6-0 vote with Roxanne Franklin absent. They did praise the architecture. The actual site zoning is also in the sub-district nine of the downtown. It's surrounded by other D9 properties to the north and the south. High-density residential exists just directly to the east, and you have a commercial professional to the south, southwest. Here's an image of the site. The project site is located, like I said, in northwest corner of Sport Fisher Drive in North Freeman. The site exists with a larger 830-square-foot home, fronting on Sport Fisher, that was constructed in 1890. The smaller unit on site is comprised of 686 square feet, and that is this blue property here, or home here. It has an attached 162-square-foot one-car garage, and both the green unit and this unit as well were analyzed by a local historian, and they actually submitted a historical analysis, which concluded that, that both structures do not have any historical content, nor do need any additional environmental review. You may have received an email from a gentleman stating that the home may be historic and not to demo the home prior to relocation. The relocation of the home, this little history, the, this gentleman purchased the home, and he's planning on relocating it to another area, apparently somewhere outside of North County, and they're working with the owner on that, and it's not required as a condition, but want to make that known. Here's some more images of the surrounding neighborhood. As you see, looking north, you have single-family. It's more of an eclectic-type development, single-family, multifamily, condominiums, apartments, pretty much have all kinds of residential-type developments in the, in this area, but it's a somewhat of a mixed medium to high-density area. And directly to the south, you have civic uses as well as a daycare. And directly to the, I guess that would be the west, is a multifamily complex, also with commercial in the coast highway fronting portion. This proposal would permit the demo of the existing structures to enable the construction of the 20,175-square-foot mixed-use structure. The mixed-use structure is proposing a height of 40.8 feet. The development would include 11 onsite parking stalls within the first level of the parking garage. The development, this development also include several EV charging stalls, which would meet our climate action plan, and they're proposing to have a reduction in parking, which is allowed per the zoning ordinance, because they're within a half-mile of a transit center, so they can have a 20% reduction, which would require them to only have 9.75 parking spaces. They're exceeding that with their 11 stalls that they're providing. Here's an image of the actual elevation. So, as you can see here, they're proposing a overall height to the top of the rooftop actual structures of 40.8. The maximum height in this area for a mixed-use development is 45. The maximum height to the actual railing itself is 35. Those two red lines there show that the lower of the two show the 45-foot height limit. They could actually go to 55 feet with the height exceptions with the rooftop structures. We worked with them to reduce the massing and keep this project a little smaller scale, just to be in compliance with what's in the area. So, they've, they've worked with staff, and this is what they provided. A majority of the building massing, like I said, we measured 35 feet to the rooftop railing. The maximum height is 40.8. They've actually worked with staff on providing articulations in the building facades, tiering effect on the actual skyline view of the building to show what they have here. The proposed mixed-use building would resemble more of a contemporary architecture design, which they've carefully analyzed the neighborhood and reviewed a lot of the newer developments in the area, and they've taken elements from several new developments that have been constructed and developed in the past decades to propose this project. In addition, they are gaining some public parking spaces by removing some of the actual driveway cuts, so we will gain at least one new public parking spot from this project. The mixed-use component, you have a, they're proposing a, a personal improvement use on the Freeman side, and on the Sport Fisher side, another commercial, smaller, more personal service use on the Sport Fisher side as well. So, reviewing this project, staff reviewed the project based on the following. General plan and land use compliance. It achieves a balance of residential land uses as well as commercial land uses. Complies with the general plan. It provides a mixed-use project that not only provides additional housing, but some additional commercial opportunities for this area. The proposed residential use, a number of units, is compatible and appropriate for this location. It is compliant with the downtown zoning ordinance in terms of bulk, scale, intensity. And with that, staff recommends that the community development commission adopt the resolution approving the tentative map, development plan, and the use permit to allow the demo of the two residential structures on site and construct a mixed-use development with five residential condominium units and two commercial units, all within the freestanding three-story building located at 513 North Freeman. This concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is on the line, and they did, they wanted to make themselves known.
So, are they prepared to make an actual presentation, or they just want to be available for questions?
I believe they just want to be available for questioning.
Thank you. Do we have any public?
The city clerk's office received two voice, two comments on this item, two of no position, but none have been asked to be read into the record.
And with that, we will close the public input portion. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, and thanks for the, for the, for demonstrating the, the actual heights, because the staff report didn't really bring that out. In the written part of the staff report, it did not talk about heights, height limits here, which is different from the previous, this one was, the, the last one, height limit was 35 here, it's higher. So, it didn't have that discussion, and it wasn't clear whether the height limit or the, yeah, the tallest part included those rooftop deck structures. So, it does look like the 40.8 includes them, and I do like the architecture, actually. It's, it's actually really kind of nice to see that articulation. I think you guys did a great job on that. Move approval.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I see that a tentative subdivision map was submitted on August 15, 2019, and we didn't get it to DAC until almost a year later. Is that the normal timeline for a submission through to DAC with our new streamlined methodology that we're attempting to move on as a city? With, I mean, this is a pretty, in my mind, is a pretty basic, simple project, you know? I just, how'd it take a year?
Typically, projects generally take anywhere from four to six months. We have a 30-day review period. At that time, we submit comments back to the, to the applicant. Usually, the ball's back in the applicant's court, and sometimes we won't hear from them for several months, you know? There might be changes in the architect, or the engineer, or they just can't get to the comments. Yeah, unfortunately, you know-
So, it took a year because of the applicant, is what you're saying? It was the applicant's delay?
There were several comments and some revisions that were needed, and we worked with them, but we didn't get back, they didn't get back to us for several months, and then once they revised the project, we were able to, to move on it within the 30-day period and get it to here.
Is applicant on the line?
Uh, yes.
Sir, ma'am, are you on the line?
Yes, and this is Mark Christopher, the architect. I can speak to that.
Hey, how, how are you? Thank you for weighing in on this. My question was in relation to this taking a year when- My question was in relation to this taking a year, when it, in my mind, it should have taken six months. What was, from your perspective, was that more on your side or the city's side on the delay?
I'll take the hit on that, but I have to do that with a caveat that I really, really enjoyed working with Scott because he, he presented me quite a few what I thought might be insurmountable hurdles. But I have to say that each time we embraced one and simply said yes, although it may have taken me a month or so to work it into the plans and into all the detail that you've seen each time, I think we got a better project for it.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no further questions.
If I can add to that, the, the project actually changed several times. Originally, they submitted for just a multifamily project with no commercial component. So we worked with them on several re-editions of the project. So this is what we came up with. And like you said, it did take some time.
Was that a second?
It, it, it looks really good. With the pictures, you know, I couldn't get that feeling from this report. But yeah, it is a really nice-looking project.
Councilmember Klein? We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Do we have any general council member comments?
More of that input from staff to make these projects look better. Thank you.
So with that, we will be adjourning to our next regularly scheduled Zoom meeting on Wednesday, October 21st.